Yeah, I used to do. Stay at the high school.
No, I think it's a completely different curriculum.
With the clerk call the roll?
Yes, Pete McGory. David Miller.
Excuse me.
I'm here.
Steve Bajali.
Here.
Mike Sula.
Here.
Jade Castle.
Castile, here.
Connor Whelan.
Yep.
Jim Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. I understand we're going to defer approval of the minutes. There was some staff crossover and they weren't distributed yet, so we'll do that next time. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I have a little staff update on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Miller. This application is for a vacation request for part of Superior Street located contiguous to 301 Superior, 420 Superior, and then parcel number 59-62001.000. This property is located part of the Health Department's configuration of parcels in this side of town. The surrounding zone needs to the north is public facilities. To the east is both public facilities and R2F, two-family residential. To the south, there's not any because it's public right-of-way. And then to the west is public facilities. The surrounding uses are both business, park, open space, and then also the Health Department's uses, existing uses for the Health Department's access, and then proposed use is still the Health Department's access. The vacation request is approximately 6,003 square feet. Currently serves as a street to access the Erie County Health Department's properties. The proposed vacated parcel would be approximately 93 feet by 66 feet. And the 93 feet is going north-south, the 66 would be east-west. The proposed vacated right-of-way become a private drive and maintained by the applicant, the Health Department. The applicant seeks to make it privately owned in order to construct a new entry into the Health Department. The approach of vacating the right-of-way is in order to enable this process of the roundabout construction. The Public Works oversees the street maintenance of the public right-of-way, and they have no objections to this request. The road to the north of the vacation request is currently privately owned by the Health Department. This section of public right-of-way has no future plans involving city use. It does not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood, and it would enable the Health Department to continue to provide high-quality services to Sandusky and Erie County residents by expanding their entryway to their sites. Based on these comments, Staff recommends approval of the proposed right-of-way for parts of the Superior Street roughly located contiguous to 301 Superior Street, 420 Superior Street, and then parcel number 59-62001.000 with the following conditions, and that's that any applicable permits for future plans must be obtained through the building, engineering, and planning departments prior to any construction. Thank you.
And I'll add one additional comment before discussion. If the Commission were to approve this, recommend this to City Commission tonight, I'll also ask that you consider making a motion to rezone, to zone that parcel, public facilities, which would match the zoning of the Health Department. And I can repeat that after your consideration of this proposal. I just want to make sure to mention that. We want to make sure that this parcel gets zoned and doesn't remain without zoning.
Thank you, both. Because this is a public hearing, I guess we're willing to hear from the public. Anybody want to make comments about this?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions about the application, if I could. This is a street that formerly ran all the way to the bay, as most of them do in Sandusky. And it seems like, doesn't seem like that long ago that when Ability Works owned it, the city right-of-way went all the way to the water. At some point, obviously, or at least if the tax maps are correct, a sizable portion of that road was already vacated. And I think we have to, we'd be remiss if we didn't study that process, what led to it, what was promised, and what we were expecting. It's, it seems like we vacate a lot of roads when they lead to the water. And I'm not suggesting in a way, shape, or form that there's any, especially in this case, this is the, the Health Department definitely, you know, is acting in the public trust and the public interest. But we have to think about long-term what might be come of that property. Once the, you know, once you vacate it, the street, it's gone. And so my question is, we should always, is it really necessary to do the vacation to achieve the desired end? We're just nibbling away here. And I'm sure there's no problem with what the Health Department wants to do with this. My problem is, you know, we're vacating yet another street that leads to the water. So I'm highly skeptical, and I think without knowing the history, and I don't really have access to the records, and I really didn't realize this was happening, it's the first I've heard of it is when I saw the packet, is, I think we have to give extra consideration when we're talking about vacating a street, especially with one that leads to the water. Do we know what the history was with that street? Because I know it wasn't long ago that we vacated, I don't know what the name of the side street is here, was that even this, this spring? Do you remember?
The side street that goes through the current parking lot of the Health Department, I believe, is Jefferson Street.
Yep.
And that was vacated for the ability to their, them to configure that parking and update that parking. The parcel north of this, we didn't look into the right-of-way that was vacated there. You can see that narrow strip. It's currently occupied by Health Department uses and used like a private drive.
Sure, right.
If, so the parcel north of that right now is landlocked. If it were to ever come into city hands, we have Lyons Park, so we could access it along the water from the west. If it were ever to, if the parcel to the east, which is a really big parcel, were ever to redevelop, there's, there's access points from the north and south and from the east and west there, so it could be connected to that in a redevelopment scenario. So either way, or it could be used for Health Department purposes. They currently have control of the property, so then it not having a right-of-way wouldn't negatively affect that. So because there's...
Isn't parcel 89.01 still owned by the Commissioner?
That, that's correct. So it's in county control.
Right. So it would seem that this act, on top of it, would landlock a parcel belonging to someone else technically. Again, if ever it's appropriate to do this, it's, you know, it's, it's an organization in the public, and there's no, no private gain here, right? But we should understand what we're doing and the long-term impact. We've got several parcels that could be, you know, some other ownership 50 years from now, and all of a sudden you're stuck. So my question, a couple of questions is, when did this happen? Because I know Ability, the tax maps show Ability Works owning pretty much the entire parcel, all the way, almost all the way to Monroe. It was, it was divided. And it showed a street right-of-way all the way to the bay. So my question is, instead of nibbling away at this and landlocking a parcel, let's at least examine the possibility of achieving this without actually technically violating it. I don't know, I mean, it's one less thing to do. It's one less, it seems like we've got Mr. Shade itching to respond.
Is it appropriate for me to respond?
It's up to the Chair.
You'll get invited up.
Yeah, that's, since we started with, with the Commission asking their questions, is there anyone else that would like to ask a question, or should we pursue this string? Anyone? Anyone?
One additional staff comment, if that's okay through the Chair.
All right.
The, I just wanted to mention that the Public Works Department took a look at the Health Department's plans for this parcel, and they recommended this path of re, of abandoning this, this small portion of right-of-way, so they were able to achieve their goals. And that's, that was our initiative to move this forward, was the recommendation from our Public Works Director.
Right, and that's why we have these hearings, to get other perspectives. I really am itching to hear what Mr. Shade has to say.
Anyone else out here?
I mean, I'll just throw it out there, I'm guessing he may say it, I'm just curious what the neighboring business there, I think it's still periodical publishing, what their plan, what the plans are to go through there, if they're still going to have access, and if they had any comments. But I think...
They're not, they're ready.
This doesn't affect.
Mr. Shade, you're up.
All right, well, I really can't reach that, but...
I would ask...
So...
Yeah, you have to go the podium and the microphone, and just for the record, so we can hear it on the recording.
And not that we don't know you, but I think it's a typical protocol to say who you are.
Thank you, I'm Peter Shade, Health Commissioner for the Erie County Board of Health. Appreciate everyone's time tonight, and as a student of history, I appreciate some of your questions. So essentially, what we have is the Health Department years ago was Vulcan Materials. And the guys who ran Vulcan Material brokered, I believe in 1973, to have Superior Street repaved. That's why that's the only street that is a concrete sustained, sustained street for semis delivering magnesium and other products at Vulcan Material then used on that site. So that's why that street is a little bit different than the other streets in the, in the subdivision. And the Health Department in Vulcan owned up to about where those red lines are at the north end of that drawing up there. They continued paving that street onto the, what is now the Health Department's property. And I don't know who worked that deal out back in 50-some years ago, but that, that's what happened. So that's why the street looks the same. The street does not go to the bay. The street stops about 200 feet north of that picture right there.
But of course, the, the right-of-way goes, did go to the bay, once upon a time.
It doesn't, because of the way that they spun off the Marina. Sandusky International Marina owns that property that that street would go into. So I don't know how...
No, I'm, I'm talking more ancient history than you are. Once upon a time, it ran to the bay.
Okay.
If you believe the records that I looked at.
When Vulcan sold everything, they spun off the Marina, and they spun off our lot.
Yeah.
Then that portion of the parking lot that's going east and west, as Ms. Blair had said, was part of Jefferson Street. The majority of Jefferson Street was vacated back in 1980, when the Health Department moved into that, that facility. When we became a combined general health district with the city of Sandusky and the county, that facility was given to the Health Department by, by the city and the county jointly, after Vulcan gave it to them. Anyway, what we're looking to do in that square box is we're asking for about 93 feet of the road. So we already own the part to the north. We're looking to extend our ownership to the south, to where that red line comes across, so we can finish the entryway into the Health Department, or the entryway into 301 Superior, which is formerly periodical publishers that we own, and formerly Ability Works. When we bought the property for 301 Superior Street, which is about 12 acres, I did that purchase through a bond with the county commissioners. And after two and a half years, we had a planned deal that I would pay, pay the bond off, which I did, and I assumed ownership in the deed of that entire property, except for the piece north of the building, which is about almost six acres that is controlled by the county commissioners. We have, at this point, just an understanding, if they would need to access that property, then I would grant them aneasement to get back there. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Yeah, just reiterating my comment, virtually all of our old streets were, the way that the whole town was plowed, run to the water wherever that is, becomes, or, you know, the water. And then some of those have been vacated in various places, sometimes ill-advised, sometimes a good idea.
Are there others that would like to comment on this issue? Well, I'll just chime in while I think...
I did ask the staff a question.
Oh, if they would research it for you?
Is it possible? Is this required, or we're just simply going along with what engineering wants to do? And is there an alternative to vacating it, to just, what's, what's wrong with letting the applicant just build what they want to? And just retaining, get rid of the legislation required to vacate the, the road?
My understanding of, of that situation is that we don't have any specifications that would match or guide the widths and the entryways that they are planning to construct at this location, and within our normal street design specifications for the city of Sandusky. So the Public Works Department wouldn't have a way to regulate what they're drawing and what they're doing, and they would have to, like, design it together with city of Sandusky specifications, and so...
Well, I bet they would be happy to work together.
It being their private property allows them to design the entrance in a way that makes sense to their private entry and not a public roadway.
If I may, also, this right-of-way is something that only the city of Sandusky can control. If, if we want to provide the Health Department with the ability to do this project, we must vacate it, basically. Like, they can't just simply start repaving our roads and things like that.
Okay, and how does the county feel about this? Because they own the...
This is our right-of-way. I don't know how the county feels about it.
I mean, doesn't that landlock that?
For them.
Yeah, okay. I mean, were they notified? I mean, it is a public hearing. I mean, they're a landowner, they're a landowner here. I mean, the county commissioners, right?
Where? I don't know what you're speaking about.
Well, unless the tax maps are wrong, one, one parcel's owned by Erie County Commissioners, and the other one is owned by Health Department.
Sorry, they would already have to get aneasement to get back there now, because we own everything between our property and the former through Superior Street. We own the entire road and the property of both sides of it. That's why I said we have a, we have a handshake agreement with the Commissioners, when and if they ever need to get back there.
Yeah. Yeah, you'd think, but sure. But just, you know.
Yeah.
Jonathan, what I'd understood Mr. Shade to say, on that image on the right on the screen, on the top, the north, north of what used to be Ability Works, now is a Health Department building, that, that was retained by the county commission at the time they sold it, sold off the building and the land to the south of the building. Did I understand that right? So my comment, I mean, your question notwithstanding, Mike, it seems clear that that ship has sailed quite a while ago, and I'm very sympathetic about the city giving up right-of-ways that go to the bay. But that right-of-way was given up long ago, and the county commissioners' parcel, landlocked or not, that wasn't our decision, that was their decision. And I'm pretty satisfied with Ms. Blair's description that access, my concern would be the, the bayfront pathway and those kind of things, public access. The obvious access to that would be from Lyons Park, which is a public park, which has parking. So if it ever gets to the point of negotiating something in the public interest on the north side of that building, I would have to believe, or certainly assume, that that would be the reason the county would have retained ownership of that parcel. And, and the obvious access would be from expansion of Lyons Park someday, possibly.
Yeah, if there were no alternatives, I would be more comfortable with it.
From the law...
Mr. Chairman, I, I would say that the county commissioners helped Mr. Shade acquire that building, so they agree with everything that's going on at that location. If they had a problem with it, they would have surely let us know by now, I would think. So I don't think they have any problem with it. And, and I feel comfortable with what you're trying to do, and the fact that you're, you're creative in what you're trying to do, and, and access will be maintained back there. That's all you're trying to do, is create better access and, and make, make a better operation at the Health Department, so.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion? We can then continue a discussion.
I would move to approve this as presented.
Did, did everybody from the public, was there any call for the public?
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this?
Didn't think there was, but...
Second?
You made a second.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I was just waiting to speak.
We have a motion, a second. Now, let's have discussion. Is there anyone at the table that would like to offer any further discussion? Well, hearing done, I'd like to call the question. Clerk, call the roll.
David Miller.
Yes.
Steve Bajali.
Yes.
Mike Sula.
No.
Jade Castile.
Yes.
Connor Whelan.
Yes.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
It's approved. Yes?
Before moving on, I'd, I'd like the Commission, if you would, consider making a motion to recommend the zoning of this property to public facilities. If we did that, we would take, it would be a, a hearing at the commission meeting where they also heard this rezoning, to move that zoning process forward, and that would make this parcel match the public facility zoning of the existing Erie County Health Department.
Does everyone understand the request?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to rezone the vacated parcel. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Knowing my vote's going to be largely symbolic, and I don't even, I'm not even sure I disagree, but I just want to, maybe for posterity, not that anybody's going to notice, just note that, you know, there were two sides to this issue, and I'll probably love the outcome, but, but I'm just, I've been frustrated with the vacations of the streets. So lest anyone think I'm against the project, I might suggest that, oh, I probably suspect that there are alternatives to this, but this may be the best way to do it. But I think, I think we've got to think, work harder to stop vacating streets to the water. So that's, that's, that's why it's going to get my no vote.
Your concern is duly noted. Is there other discussion? Call the question.
David Miller.
Yes.
Steve Bajali.
Yes.
Mike Sula.
A simply symbolic no.
Jade Castile.
Yes.
Connor Whelan.
Yes.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda is an adjudication hearing. Jonathan, this is where some swearing happens. I mean, someone needs to be sworn in for an adjudication hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak?
Could you coach Mr. Miller through the swearing in? Because it's adjudication hearing.
I'm sorry, you can simply, anyone who would be providing testimony, if they just want to raise their right hand and swear that the testimony they provide is the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Anyone here planned to speak on this?
And if they want to swear to God, they may, but they're not required to.
That includes staff?
Yes.
Anyone in the audience intend to speak to this issue? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Swear.
Excellent. All right, well, let's have a staff briefing on this issue then.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. This is for a conditional use application for 803 West Shoreline Drive, to make this a legal-conforming Marina use to allow a secondary use for Marina storage, for boats. The site is currently zoned downtown business. To the north is no zoning, it's the Sandusky Bay. To the east is downtown business. To the south is limited manufacturing. To the west is downtown business. Surrounding uses are both commercial and industrial, and also a park. Existing use is a Marina. The proposed use is a Marina. The applicant would like to seek a conditional use permit to expand an indoor and also potential outdoor boat storage operation. The current Marina and accessory boat storage, Deep Water Marina, excuse me, is a legal, non-conforming use. Therefore, it may not continue to expand without a conditional use permit. Pertaining to this application, boat storage is not a permitted main use in the downtown business district. However, a Marina is a permitted main use with a conditional use permit. The proposed boat storage would then be an accessory use to the permitted main use. The intended boat storage would be a mix of indoor and exterior boat storage. In order to build additional structures to this site, this permit must be obtained. Staff considers boat storage to be inharmonious to the downtown business zoning district, particularly to the waterfront sites. Indoor and outdoor boat storage facilities are a barrier to walkability and the character of downtown development. There's increasing interest in downtown mixed-use development here in Sandusky, including residential and commercial demand, and public interest in access to waterfront. Based on these recent developments in the city of Sandusky, staff expects residential and mixed-use development character to continue to expand outside of the current downtown limits. The bicentennial comprehensive plan recommends recreation and public access on a site, on a site particularly like this, to, as a remediation strategy. In conclusion, staff recommends against the approval of the proposed conditional use permit for Marina use slash boat storage at 803 West Shoreline Drive.
I'll add one comment, that we've gotten questions about this, that could the Marina use continue on this site? And the answer is yes, it is a legal, non-conforming Marina use. Just to reiterate Mr. Oak's comments, that the use cannot expand, so they, they cannot add additional boat storage on the site as it exists today without a conditional use permit.
Any questions of staff regarding what they presented?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What, it's not clear to me, what, what did I miss? What, will the conditional use permit say precisely?
If...
Is it in here? I don't, I missed it if it is.
As applied for, the applicant is asking for a conditional use permit for a Marina use. If they receive that, they would be allowed to proceed with a Marina use, with boat storage as an accessory use, because boat storage is a permitted accessory use of Marina.
Thank you.
And when the conditional use permit asks us to evaluate a number of metrics, it's there in your packet, it looks like there's a page number seven on the bottom. It asks that the proposed use is necessary to serve community needs, and that existing similar facilities are inadequate. That's item A. And then item D is quoted in our recommendation that the proposed use will form a harmonious part of the business district, taking into account of convenience of access and relationship of one use to another. Now, just caution that our waterfront property is limited, and it is the reason why Sandusky exists, and we should be really careful what we allow on our waterfront property and what's harmonious to the downtown business district.
Okay, so, thank you for that. I, unless I missed it, there's no discussion on the height restriction that applies to that property, too. We're talking about a drive, a dry-rack barn. That's a lot taller than the nominal two stories that's allowed at that site. It's a, so what application would apply there? And what hurdles, what further hurdles are there here?
Through the Chair, that would be a site plan application if they were proposing a structure. They're not currently proposing anything because they wanted to see if you would grant them the conditional use permit.
A site plan doesn't, approval doesn't allow you to violate the zoning code that prohibits, that limits building height. Does it? I don't think so.
The site plan process is when we review the setbacks, the height limitations, any limitations on a parcel, when we have a proposed structure to review.
Right, I don't think we can, I don't think we can approve a site plan that would call for a building higher than the zoning code allows.
That, without a variance, we could not approve a site plan.
So there would be a variance needed as well, to, to, to build a rack storage building?
If there were a structure proposed that was in exceeding of the height requirements of the... of the zoning, it wouldn't need a variance in order to get permitting. But there's no structure proposed at this time.
So we've got other hurdles. We've got, we would need a variance to permit a structure taller than, and I don't know what the height restriction is precisely, but it's from grade, if I remember correctly. It goes way back. We approved this 15, 20 years ago. Mr. Miller probably remembers. So that would be a variance, you're saying. And then there'd be a site plan approval. And among all that is the issue of our comprehensive plans that have always tried to protect sightlines to the water. So you'd be kind of violating that principle on a place that we're trying to. So I'm just, I'm trying to provide support for your opposition here. Your recommendation against it, there's a lot of other reasons not in the report, I guess is what I'm trying to get to, other than what's in the report for not approving this application.
Are there others at the table that would like to speak to this issue?
So am I understanding correctly, if this were approved, they would have to come back with a site plan to get approved for any?
For any structure.
And variance from.
Yeah, and whatever else was required.
So they would, a site plan would have to adhere to a 45-foot height limit if that's what the downtown business zoning district calls for, for any structure north of Shoreline Drive. And to Mr. Sula's point, if they wanted to build something that blocked the views to the water from Shoreline Drive, we probably would recommend that a structure not be built along the full frontage of Shoreline Drive. And we'd also advocate for public access to a site if the site were to redevelop in the future.
Okay. While I have the mic, I will also comment that while I don't generally like the idea of building up and blocking the waterfront, I do think that this is perhaps a little bit different than some of the other waterfront properties we have in that you're just north of a factory, you're next to a major hill that the city built there, and a bunch of salt mounds there to the west. So it's not exactly the most scenic of our waterfronts.
Other people would like to comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for my understanding, the issue is the boat storage. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
If it was presented with, say, something that adhered to the comprehensive plan, something that was compatible with that, then there wouldn't be a problem, right?
Yes, we would support a use of this site that we determine is harmonious to the downtown business zoning district.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Is the owner here? No. All right. I would, I was going to ask him a question.
Just one question. So the primary reason that they want this is because they want to put more boats in there. Is that, okay.
Correct. Because they can continue operating it as a marina without any change. They don't need any further permitting because it's currently operating as a marina.
All right. So they just want permission to put more boats in there?
Correct.
Has everybody had an opportunity to speak? Any more comments? Then I'd entertain a motion to, consistent with staff's recommendation, deny this application. Anyone?
So moves, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second to deny this application consistent with staff recommendation. Further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
David Miller.
Yes.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
Mike Sula.
Yes, to deny.
Jade Castile.
Yes.
Connor Whelan.
No.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
Well, next item, a special presentation. Make that one.
I believe our director, Jonathan Holliday, would like to introduce the presenters.
Yes.
Excellent.
And then Sandusky.
Yes, to deny. That was, Connor was a na.
Good evening, planning commission members, staff, audience, and those watching. My name is Jonathan Holliday. As you all know, Sandusky's fortunate to have an historic train station on Depot Street that still operates as a train station for Amtrak as well as a station for our Greyhound, our bus service, as well as our transit operations. We've long known of some operational inefficiencies at that location. We also know that there's increased interest and forthcoming investment in passenger rail service throughout this country. And we want to be prepared to capture some of those funds and improve the service of the train station, which could really serve as an economic engine for our tourism industry here in the city. So with the generous support of the Erie County Community Foundation as well as some of our community development block grant funding, a few months ago, we launched a study of the train station with the help of our partners here from AECom. And I'm excited this evening that they're here to share with you some of the preliminary findings, preliminary recommendations, and to gather any initial input that you may have and that the members of the public may want to share with us before we conclude this study and hopefully position the train station for a major overhaul and additional major grant funding that we hope to secure to improve the station. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to the team at AECom and ask them to introduce themselves and share with you what they've found so far.
Thanks, Jonathan. I might ask for some help in making sure I can get the presentation up and running. But I'm Jeremy Windsor. I am a transportation planner with AECom. I work mostly on multimodal and transit types of projects.
AECom?
AECom, that's right.
What's AECom?
That's a great question. I think it's essentially trying to, we're a full-service infrastructure firm. And what I've been told is AECom's kind of stands for Architecture, Engineering, Construction, Operations.
Okay, so you're a consulting?
We're a consultant, yes. Yep, design engineer. Yep. I wasn't sure if you were asking about the acronym or something.
I was asking both. I mean, just knowing what the acronym means. And even if you don't know, if you're in A and E, you're A and E.
Yeah.
Yep. And you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah. So I'll speak specifically here in a little bit. But Christian Lynn, I lead our urbanism and planning practice in Ohio, but working collaboratively with Jeremy and others on kind of the site planning aspects of some of the early recommendations we're looking at.
All right. Great. So we're going to try to keep this brief, try to get through this in about 15 minutes. But if folks, I'll try to save room for questions on the backend here. So, so yes, Jonathan, thanks for that introduction. We got signed up by the city to essentially kind of deliver a scope that's really what we're intending to kind of walk through today. Study what the existing conditions are out there. Try to define what the purpose and need for a project might be. This is important for grant applications and for kind of defining a project that could be competitive for funding. Develop a facility program for what the needs are. Look at some different site options and then come up with a preferred concept. And so we're coming here today at the point where we've started to do some thinking about that preferred concept. And we're starting to get into what potential next steps are to move the project forward. But we're here to hear from you if you have any questions about it. So I'm going to touch on each of these topics a little bit. I don't think I need to tell this group where the train station is, but here it's located down on Depot Street, kind of down in the south and west corner of the city today. And the first thing to say about the station, as Jonathan mentioned, is its historical value, something that was built in the 1890s. It is on, it is a national landmark and listed as such. And there's a lot of rich history that goes around this station as kind of a gateway to the city of Sandusky. But of course, today it functions as more than just a train station. It is still a train station, of course, but it also operates as kind of the local hub for transit operations. So today, as you might be able to see on this graphic, I don't know if I can point around, yes. You know, really kind of the western half of the site is dedicated to local transit operations. There's buses that are parked, buses and vans for the Sandusky Transit. In this location, there's a maintenance garage at that location for those vehicles. Two-thirds or more of the actual historic facility is used up for staffing for the local transit operations. And then just a small kind of vestibule area left over for actual use by Amtrak passengers. There's kind of an old baggage room from when trains were operated in a different way that is still located on the site as well. And Greyhound serves this station as well. So they pull in and kind of use this drive to pick up and drop off passengers today. The other thing I'll say about the station in terms of how it operates from a rail perspective is there's a lot of tracks kind of in this area just adjacent to the station. The two main tracks, the Norfolk Southern tracks, the main line, are kind of on the north side right here. The Amtrak station, the Amtrak service that comes to the station stops in both directions, but needs to, both, all those trains need to be on that kind of northern track in order to pick up and drop off customers. That happens late at night, in the middle of the night even. And a lot of times, the need for trains to kind of come over and kind of access that northern track can cause some congestion and delays in both the underlying freight service and also for the Amtrak service itself. So there's a bit of an operational challenge on those rail tracks that exists just based on what the station is out there today. There's also not a real full platform that allows for loading and unloading of all cars. And so this train sometimes has to stop multiple times to kind of unload different cars as it reaches the Sandusky Station today. And we'll talk more about the operational challenges there. So we've created kind of a summary of what the existing conditions are. A couple of things that I've mentioned from the Amtrak station perspective, there's about an 80-foot loading platform that exists today. Kind of the standard for a long-distance train for Amtrak is more like 500 to 600 feet of kind of linear space for a long-distance train. Because of that single platform, there's some inefficiency in train operations. And the majority of that historic station is really not open for public use. It's kind of behind, you know, closed-off portions of that building. And as you walk in there, we got a chance to kind of go into the station. It's really impressive and nice to see on the inside, but most of the public can't really access that or see that today. And as because of that, we have kind of limited customer amenities, limited waiting areas for people using the station. The station also doesn't work great necessarily from a transit perspective. There's not really a lot of fleet storage right there. The transit service is currently going through a study of...
I'm sorry, there's not a lot of what right there?
I'm sorry?
Not a lot of what right there?
There's not a lot of storage for transit.
Thank you.
The transit fleet parking, essentially.
Thank you.
And there are plans underway to potentially look at, you know, future of that transit agency and ways to expand it in the future. There's, the maintenance facility that they have doesn't really have full ceiling heights to allow for jacks. And a lot of the, they have four bays, but only a couple of them can really be used for maintaining and servicing vehicles. And the depot itself is not really centralized in terms of where the location is. You know, transit operations kind of come downtown. This is kind of aside the downtown area in terms of where the buses operate within the city. And it's also across from kind of a residential area. So we've developed kind of a purpose and need, as I said. I'm not going to go through, there's a lot of text on this slide, but this is just a little bit of a narrative about what we think the opportunities are and the needs are at the site. And that's really to rebuild and relocate this Amtrak, rebuild or relocate the Amtrak Greyhound facility to address those operational challenges and allow for that future growth. One more element that I haven't mentioned so far is that Amtrak has a big vision plan out there right now to increase transit, or train service kind of between Cleveland, Chicago, between Chicago and places to the east. Right now, there's that one train that kind of in both directions that comes through in the middle of the night. There's opportunities for a lot more service in the future, but the operational challenges that are out there would really make a challenge to serve the Sandusky Station if those service expansion plans were to come to fruition. So we see an opportunity to really improve a lot of the operations out there, add space for the various functions that are out there today.
Could I interrupt you just a second?
Yes.
My colleague here is starting to take pictures. My question is, is this presentation going to be available online so that we can?
Yes. Yes. We can arrange how to kind of share that, right?
Thank you.
No need to take pictures.
Could you go back to that slide for one second?
Yeah, of course.
Because I'm taking a picture, too, and I want to refer back to that today. So, thank you.
Sounds good.
Done.
You're free to take pictures, but we'll provide these slides as well. So what does that look like in terms of what a future facility would be needed or what that could look like? The first thing that we would refer to are Amtrak, which has kind of their own station guidelines. So what you see on the slide here to right now is really directly from how they would prefer to see a station of this type organized. They have a few different categories for stations based on how much ridership there are. This station in the future, even with additional ridership, would kind of fall into what they call a caretaker category, where you would have a waiting and boarding area outside but sheltered. You would have convenient drop-off and access. You would have long-term parking that's available for people who are looking to access the station and then go somewhere else for a few days. And then you would have a staffed station with amenities. You'd be able to buy tickets and have vending machines and such as well. So that's how we're kind of using the Amtrak guidelines to guide what we see as the facility needs out on the site. So from that, we developed a preliminary framework for kind of the needs, both for Amtrak and for local transit operations, and to try to drive at what we think is needed as a minimum standard for the space that would support both of those operations in the future. So what you see on the screen here, it kind of includes the program elements on the left-hand side. And the kind of purple pieces are more of those local transit indoor spaces that would support local transit operations. And the blue is indoor space for, that would be needed or kind of a minimum standard for the Amtrak, waiting areas and ticketing and restrooms and such. The big green bubbles are more what would be assumed to be outdoor spaces, so access elements like parking and site circulation, and then just buffers and open space in and around the facility itself. It's important to say that this could all fit on a single site still, like it is today, and coexist. Or all of these elements could potentially fit on multiple sites. There's no real reason why the Amtrak station and the local transit need to coexist. In most cities, they don't, frankly.
The Elyria Station project probably met some of this. What do you think of the Elyria project?
I'm not familiar specifically with the Elyria project.
I would recommend becoming familiar with it because it has its successes and its failures.
Okay. Yeah, we can look at, I mean, the Elyria Station is consequential to this because it's located on the south side of the tracks. That's what I know about the Elyria Station. And that means that all the trains kind of need to shuffle between the sides.
It's very impressive and very empty.
Okay. So we did think about options. That was one of the things that was in our, in our list of things to do. So we have the Amtrak station, we have the local transit center, right? You could update both of those on the existing site, just as they are today. You might need a little bit of room to really provide for sufficient space for growth in both of those and to allow for a site that really meets those needs. You could update the Amtrak station at the current site and find a different location for the transit facility itself. You could relocate both of those things to different locations and try to find some new locations for each and potentially repurpose that historic station for other uses. Out of those options, our recommendation and what we think is the, should be the preferred scenario to pursue would be kind of that middle option. And the reasons why, because it really kind of better suits the needs for the transit facility to kind of relocate it to a different site, a more centrally located site potentially, that allows for more room for expansion in the future. Relocating the Amtrak station is a very difficult proposition. There's really only limited spots along the rail where you can actually find a site that meets its needs. And so that would be a difficult thing to do related to option three. three. And, you know, obviously, the, there are some trade-offs for having two separate sites for the city to manage and to own, but we think that there's benefits from having the, from the transit-
What would be the fate of the historic, the historic station?
What was that?
What would be the fate of the historic station?
So the option would be to basically rehab it as a focal point and as the Amtrak-
So utilize the existing structure. Great, yeah. It's, obviously, it's a, well, established principle that the best way to preserve an important historic structure is to use it for its original intended use and-
I completely agree.
Yeah, so good.
That's the recommendation. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Christian, who can kind of talk you through what the scenario looks like.
Thanks, Jeremy. So just finishing up here, we, everything that Jeremy talked about thus far, we kind of took those ideas, recommendations, constraints, and built them into, let's say, this is the first preliminary site plan that looks at relocating the transit facilities and the transit administrative pieces to other sort of hypothetical site for the purposes of looking at what kind of restored Amtrak station would look like. So just kind of walking you through on the, would be on the west side, where there's the existing maintenance facility now, that would be, become the long-term parking area.
Christian, can I interrupt you for a sec?
Yes.
Would you use the mouse to point around, because that was really helpful when Jeremy was doing that?
Yeah.
Thanks. We can, yeah, you can, if you look at that laptop, you'll be able to see it. There you go.
Yes, so here, where the maintenance facility exists today, that would become long-term parking. Right now, there's this diagonal parking here, which does pose a bit of a safety issue with, one, it's kind of people crossing here with kind of incoming traffic. And so this would provide kind of a direct pedestrian accessible connection that, you know, doesn't require you crossing over kind of the drop-off lane. Again, we would, you know, kind of reclaim the station to its, you know, historic integrity is also dedicate this internal space to that original function. And then, a slide or two later, talk about some of the potential amenity uses that could either be, you know, co-mangled in the main space or in this currently totally unused baggage storage. It may be, you know, transit slash bus, Greyhound supportive amenities, like a coffee shop or kind of cafe element. And so the big, one of the big ideas that really makes the station function a lot better is adding a second platform. So, well, two things. One, adding a legitimate tube platform on, that exists, that doesn't exist right now along the north side of the tracks, and then adding a second platform. This would alleviate the need for trains to stop when they come through, so you're not kind of creating this bottleneck. So with that, you have to get people over the tracks. You can, you can go under, you can go over, but, you know, the most common way and the most acceptable way is to go over. And so what is kind of covered up with bubbles, but this line represents a bridge that goes over the tracks. There's, Amtrak typically would look at ramping up here, so we've, you know, looked at functionally how that would work. And then on the south side, where we go down to the other ramp, we would have an elevator, which again is how Amtrak typically looks at these types of improvements. They like to minimize elevators, but there's usually a space limitation on this side, and so the elevator and the mechanical aspect pieces would go over here, and then you have your second platform. In order to do that, there is a line shift that's required just to make space. And so these are some of the things that are part of a larger initiative that Amtrak's looking to increase operational efficiency. And this also would have, you know, benefits to the Norfolk Southern, who, you know, they would have increased capacity and usage with these improvements. So there's co, there's mutually beneficial improvements, kind of on both counts, since these are shared tracks. And then in the area now, there's parking right here, but seeing that as a great opportunity creates some outdoor amenity space for both, you know, passengers waiting, either for Greyhound and/or Amtrak. I didn't mention this over here, but, you know, the preservation of some green space along here, this is kind of the most kind of visible piece of the property as you would kind of coming into or out of the city. And so as a kind of a placeholder suggestion, that is an opportunity for some level of place-making or kind of awareness that the station is here. And then, moving to the east, so there is a piece right now that I believe the city has the opportunity to purchase. It's not under city ownership now, this adjacent property. And it's, if I'm, it's about 1.04 acres. And so, you know, if the larger Amtrak plans do go forward and these improvements are made, you could see a significant increase in the, oh, in the amount, in the amount of ridership here. And so, you know, this parking lot is a representative of what could be overflow parking, and may be a valuable, having this piece of property may be a valuable asset for the future functioning of this property and also give a little bit of operational flexibility. One thing to note, there is a cell tower here that, you know, the current assumption is that that will continue to be there, and so we've sort of kind of steered clear of that. So with that, just looking, you know, these are some of the elements that were kind of outlined on the plan, but, you know, what we mean when we say, when we refer to certain things and other stations that have taken on similar initiatives. One item I didn't mention is, you know, there's this other aspect of connectivity beyond trains and buses, it's the kind of micro-mobility aspect, so bikes, if you were, you know, e-scoos or any other sort of kind of small mobility features, that plaza next to the train station that we're kind of filling in would represent a space where you could create that little hub to encourage more kind of micro-mobility throughout the city and to the station. And on top of this, I know Jonathan's very passionate about this. I mean, the city, this is a historic structure that is really beautiful, and so, you know, I think there's also other opportunities that could be explored to activate, activate the structure and celebrate the structure. So there may be other reasons people are coming here beyond just, you know, transit or, you know, train, getting a train, and that would be the ideal situation. And then, lastly, is we did want to see what a, what a site would look like if you would take all those transit and transit supportive pieces Jeremy showed on the program, what does that look like physically? And you could move these boxes around, but we wanted to see, one of our points was, we think we could get more efficiency if it was at a different location. We have a really long skinny site now where you could expand, but it takes up a darn lot of space. So this is showing about just under three acres of space if you were to go and look for another site around the city. And this does accommodate some level of expansion of the transit fleet. You know, that number could flex, but, you know, this is showing maybe a 50%, 40%, 50% increase. It accounts for kind of the administrative support of that facility, of the system being co-located there, and additionally having a more adequate maintenance facility that has, you know, the proper height. And, because right now, it's just kind of reusing a facility that's, that's there that doesn't really, wasn't really built, or to my knowledge, wasn't built for that exact purpose. And then sort of being anchored around consolidated parking that you can kind of spur out from to serve each of those facilities. So I think that is, yes. Oh, so next steps, right now, and these are sort of next steps, but also ongoing, you know, we're talking to other, RLS is looking at the larger transit studies system, so we're coordinating with them, talking with the railroad at Amtrak, who has some other things going on, and making sure we're coordinated. We are going to start looking at some preliminary costs associated with this initial concept, and then helping the city to think about, you know, one of the next steps that make the most sense in terms of funding. And as Jonathan mentioned, really leveraging grant funding that is out there right now and is pretty significant, so we want to make sure that we have a good plan in place to go capture that. So with that, and take any questions.
Here's a question or perhaps a comment, and I'm not sure where it falls. Interestingly, within the last day, a citizen was discussing with me her experience with using the train station. She did a trip to Chicago, and I made a comment something about, isn't it kind of middle of the night? Well, in her case, apparently, the train for Chicago boarded at 5:00 in the morning, and, untypical, they were actually on time, possibly a little bit early. And she expressed to me that as a woman traveling alone, she felt kind of uncomfortable, and made the suggestion to me that she intended to contact the police department, it's very knowable when that train is gonna come in. Apparently, there's an app for that, to know if it's early or late, or how much so. And that, forearmed with that little bit of information, it might not be too difficult to have the cops patrol it a little bit around the time that a train is coming or going. And that also kind of leads to, in the past, people I've known that have taken the train didn't really feel comfortable leaving a car down there. That's not really, so I didn't, I didn't see any mention or suggestion about how to secure a parking lot or how to make people safe. Like, the outdoor amenities, not a lot that a train needs in the middle of the night in outdoor amenities in that neighborhood. Maybe the Greyhound service is a different thing, but if the transit hub isn't there, then-
Yep. So initially, so part of, you know, our assumptions, and I, and I think it's not just our recommendations, but larger efforts are under the assumption that there, there is extreme potential for increased ridership. And if these improvements, along with other improvements that are being looked at kind of more globally, happened, there would be much more frequent service and not, maybe they'd still come in the middle of the night, but they would come at other times. So it is all kind of under the umbrella that that, you know, that that potential can be captured to some degree. And so I think, when you look at that, I think that's a future condition. But to your point, there may be kind of short-term interim things that could be done to address safety. I know when we, so we also work on kind of assessing other Amtrak stations around the country, and one of their program, it's called an ADA program, but they also look at safety, security of each of the sites. And so integrated with this, not, we didn't have that level of detail here, but there is specific security measures you would look at, whether it's cameras, and then also, but sight lighting is something that's lacking significantly there, and obviously contributes greatly to safety. So those are two initial components, and then, yes, whether there's a physical control or not, I think is something to be looked at. But it is all under the presumption that there would be a lot more people coming in and out of the station if some of these recommendations are implemented. I don't know.
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same thing. I think a lot of this is predicated on building something for a future condition that, where there's a lot more service, and that it's not just 4:30 in the morning type of service that's arriving at the station. And, you know, I think we could take some of your comments about kind of security. I think we heard some of that. I think you even passed Jonathan some comments that you received when some of the news articles were about this, were put out there from users who said, the current station and kind of that small vestibule that you can kind of go into right now as a, as a waiting area is not very inviting. It doesn't feel safe for people who are kind of there in the middle of the night, and there needs to be ways to kind of open that up to potentially staff it during those times when there's people there. Right now, there's not really even a spot for a staff person to be in the station.
One more area to comment or get your view on. I think there's a potential for a significant increase ridership if, as it's my understanding, the traffic's all going east-west, there was ability to catch a train in Sandusky to go to Columbus or Cincinnati or, you know, some sort of north-south thing. And I guess you're probably not in charge of where Amtrak trains run, but what are the prospects of being able to go someplace other than New York or Chicago?
Yeah. I, I mean, there, I can't speak specifically to that, but I know there are other significant initiatives by Amtrak in the state of Ohio, looking at cross-state connections, so, but...
Maybe they could bring Hyperloop back. Hyperloop.
Trend has passed.
Hyperloop, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, it's funny you bring that up, because that subject is hot right now. I think it's a really exciting time for public transportation, for Amtrak, that there's some hope of expanding service out here. And there's talk, or at least some are trying to promote the idea of even going, you know, to Columbus. Not from here, but at least you'd have a way of getting there. As we know, historically, we kind of turned down a, a decade ago, a project that would have run high-speed rail from Cleveland to Columbus to Cincinnati, and probably there are some, some regrets about that. It's, it's really exciting what we're doing here, and I think it's a moment where we have to express appreciation for, well, Leeds, Leadership Sandusky, or Leeds as it was called back then, probably 20, 25 years ago, over 20 years ago, I think, I know, did a project to renovate that station. So that's their vision contributed to that. And then shortly thereafter, the Community Development Department, which was in charge, of course, of public transportation, which was non-existent in Sandusky back then, there was no bus service. And we had a, you know, it was just a vision at the time, and we've grown that, and even being understaffed under really strong headwinds managed to push through a fledgling transit system, a bus, a bus system, which is, at this point, quite a few people depend on now, and it has proved successful being, being so persistent, so against great headwinds because they were understaffed, and there was some doubt about it, and we did it anyway. And that vision of using that as a transportation hub helped a lot to keep the station alive and, and keep it used even though the Amtrak, that we're underserved with Amtrak passenger rail along this corridor, or we have been, and of course, it's about to change, in putting the service facility, that, that all worked. The cabs, the cab companies were encouraged to hub there and, and be there, and it became, it was, the vision was a transportation hub. At one point, a franchisee of Greyhound was encouraged to be there, and they rejected it and went to 250, and they crashed and burned there. And then this time around, I think the Greyhound's been more successful hubbing there, so, or having, having a stop there. So it's really exciting. Sometimes the wheels grind- having, having a stop there. So it's really exciting. Sometimes the wheels grind slowly, but the vision comes around, and I think we have some hope of having some real serious public transportation in Sandusky. I had one quick question. Obviously, you need to cross the tracks. You know, we've been getting away without it, but to do it right, is it better to go under or over when it comes to grade separation, and is it better for, I imagine it's prettier, and more interesting, and more secure to go over the tracks. And my understanding is you'd have a platform, and then you'd have Amtrak on both sides of that platform, on the other side of, is that the vision?
Yeah. And so the challenge, and just going from, you know, our experience, is, well, one, since the tracks are not Amtraks, there's not a lot of encouragement to go under, so...
Right.
And then, yeah, you have to get back up.
Is it out of the question to shift the freight and keep the, keep the Amtrak? I know it'd be more work, but is it, is it even feasible to shift the freight and put the platform closer to the station? Because it seems that, once you're all done, it's gonna say, what do they do that for? You know, going, it seems like intuitively, it was like, yeah, it'd be harder, but, but at the end of the day, you'd have a much better outcome having, shifting the freight farther away, and keeping the platform close to the station.
Yeah, as Christian said, I think one of the challenges there is this is kind of the main line for Norfolk Southern, and so you're gonna need to come up with something that kind of works operationally from their perspective, and they are the primary traffic up and down this corridor.
And a much more gradual shift. They don't want a herky-jerky...
Exactly, yeah, they wanna...
Amtrak's gonna slow down at your station, so they, yeah, it's, it's much, much cheaper, obviously.
Right. We think they would buy into the extra platform, because it would relieve some rail congestion that happens on their end as well, due to the passenger trains coming down the corridor.
Oh, of course.
But, but, you know, I think it's important to underscore that what we're showing right now is kind of a concept that could be the ultimate vision, and it might not all need to happen all at once. So especially that, like, overpass second platform, I think a lot of that is predicated on there being a lot more Amtrak service in the future. It might be the kind of thing that gets delivered as part of a larger kind of corridor-level investment, while even as the kind of main platform that's there today, the station house, the local transit facility, those are elements that could be advanced separately from needing to have that overpass out there, which, which is, could be an expensive proposition.
Well, you know, overpass either way, but it would be great to see a Plan A or Plan B, or I'd like to have, and a reality of at least mentioning that, you know, shifting the freight out would be, you know, in the long term, much better if, if it came to pass that it was feasible to, well, I guess you'd need the railroad to cooperate too, of course. Either, either way, you're gonna need their cooperation, so...
I'll mention that we'll be working with AECOM over the next two months, roughly, to finish up this study. So I would welcome any further questions or comments after this meeting. You've been very generous with your time this evening, so I want to thank you for allowing us to give this presentation, and thank the team from AECOM for being here, and for their good work on this so far. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention, in the, looking at the literature, did you happen to look at a study that was done? I don't know, I lose track of time. I think the Northern Ohio Railroad Association did it, and they made some of the same recommendations you've made, specifically the two platforms. But they did it for Toledo, Timocog, our Amtrak station, Aliria, and Awaka was gonna be a part of this. So I, you can, you can get, there's maybe, have you seen it?
Yeah, this, I don't know, do you wanna...
Well, I would just say that, you know, I don't think we're, I don't think we can claim complete credit for adding the second platform. I think that's an idea, as you said, that we've seen out there in other places, is kind of a need to reduce congestion. It's just how do you kind of make that work from a design perspective? So, yeah, we are familiar with some of the previous proposals that have been put out there. I'm not sure if it's from the exact group that you mentioned, but...
Yeah, that's, well, there's an article written by Ken Prendergast, who...
Yeah, that, he was the one.
So, yeah, and so there's other people looking at similar issues to what Sandusky is looking at, too. So there's also kind of, like we said, there's more kind of a 10,000-foot view of this that's kind of being explored. So coordinating this with that is important, and things that we need to kind of continue to focus on.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have several items, three, I believe, items of new business, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Oaks is getting our presentation back online here.
First one is a site plan for 2121 Superior Street.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. As you mentioned, this is a site plan for 2121 Superior Street. The current site is zoned general manufacturing, and the surrounding zoning on all sides is also general manufacturing. Surrounding uses to this property are both business and manufacturing. The business, or excuse me, the use of this current site is storage. The proposed use is additional storage. The site is approximately half an acre. The existing building is 3,840 square feet, and the site coverage is approximately 22%. The applicant proposes to expand the existing building by 480 square feet. The applicant stated in the application that the addition is going to be used as dry storage for miscellaneous items. The existing building is currently used for storage based on the applicant's application. Staff has determined, based on the proposal, that no additional parking would be necessary. The building expansion is for storage, and therefore, no additional traffic will be coming onto the site. With no additional parking requirements, no additional landscaping would be required, because 25 spaces would trigger landscaping requirements, and the requirements for this site specifically would be six, which staff has determined the current site layout would suffice for that requirement. So all area standards are satisfied, all yard regulations are satisfied. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan of an existing, adding an existing storage building at 2121 Superior Street to following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits are obtained through the building engineering and planning departments prior to any construction. Thank you.
All right, to the table. Any questions of staff?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor, signify with aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Save the call.
David Miller? Oh, he said save it.
What did you say?
I said saved, we saved, it was unanimous, we don't...
Okay, very good.
Everybody has approved.
Good move.
Next up, 2802 Venice Road, a special residency occupancy permit.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, my apologies. It's 2820 Venice Road, there was a, apparently typo on the present, yeah, correct.
2802, or is it?
2820, 2820.
2820, thank you.
My apologies. The site is currently zoned for limited manufacturing. It's surrounded by limited manufacturing in all directions. The surrounding uses of this property are commercial, industrial, and residential. Existing use is a residential structure. The proposed use is a residential structure. Property is, the property is approximately .3116 acres. The structure that sits on this property is approximately 1,168 square feet. The applicant would like to turn the residential structure into a legal, single-family residential use within a manufacturing district by obtaining the special residency occupancy permit, and the applicant has stated they would like to rent this month-to-month as a single-family use. It's unknown whether this has been a legal, non-conforming use in the past. Staff aided on the side of caution. We don't have any records showing that this had been a legal use at any point in its existence. So we caution the applicant to apply for this to become on the legal side of the residential use, because residential use is not permitted in a manufacturing district without this permit. So there is evidence based on street views of Google that there was residential use in the past, but like I said, we weighed on the side of caution with this one. There are residential structures on both sides, and also across the street of this property, and staff has determined that it's, this appraisal does not negatively impact the surrounding uses, nor does it affect the character of this property or the corridor. There are no, there have been no objections received from any other departments prior to the issuance of this report. In conclusion, staff supports the approval of the proposed substitution, excuse me, the proposed special residential occupancy permit at 2820 Venice Road with the following conditions. That's that no, or excuse me, the special residential occupancy permit must be renewed annually, and just a staff note, there's no fee for renewing this annually.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Regarding the follow, the condition, or conditions on your recommendation, is that, is that unique?
Just a direct quote from the code.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a direct quote, quote from the code.
That would be normal per the code.
Correct.
Normal per the code for the annual...
And then, is that just a comment that no fee is required, or...
The zoning code specifically requires that upon approval, so...
Right, so it's more, more of an aside?
It's more of, I guess, of a reminder.
Or an asterisk, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Is that because it's gonna be a rental property?
No, even if the owner were to live here, that would also be required.
Okay.
Further, further comments?
Make a motion.
You retain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve this as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim, seconds, Mr. Jackson. Further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Again, I think you can mark us all as approving. And the third item, 320 East Washington to name an alley.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. This property is at 320 East Washington Street. The current zoning is not applicable. It is currently a right-of-way to the north, south, east, and west is all two-family residential. The existing use is a vacant right-of-way as an alley to access some of the back of these properties along Washington Streets, and also the back of some Adams Street properties. The resident living at 320 Washington Street has requested to name the alley connecting Hancock Street to the west, to Franklin Street to the east. The name, the applicant wishes to call the alley is Heritage Way. Heritage Drive is an existing name within the city, currently located in a subdivision southwest of Cleveland Road and southeast of Remington Avenue. The applicant has requested two alternatives if Planning Commission does not approve Heritage Way. The first alternative, and excuse me if I do not pronounce this correctly, Paddle Way, and the second is Parker's Path. Following the guidance from the subdivision code street section, Planning Commission must approve all street names connected to a public right-of-way. Planning staff does not oppose the naming of this right-of-way. The alley is in fair shape and is still regularly used by these residents. The vehicle of traffic is generally heavy to moderate, and is clear of trees and any branches overhead. There's not any obstructions to the public right-of-way currently, or major damage to that alley. In conclusion of these comments, staff is no opposition to the naming of the existing right-of-way, of Heritage Way.
And I have one additional comment, looking into best practices for road naming. It's not uncommon for like a park boulevard and a park street to be in the same city, so Heritage Way and Heritage Drive shouldn't be a conflict. We did reach out to the police department and followed up, and it didn't receive any objections to that. Another item to note is, we had Mr. Bowie fill out just the other application to come before Planning Commission. He circulated a petition with his neighbors and received more than half of signatures from owners whose property directly touches the right-of-way in support of the request. And I did some research to see if there were any other Heritage Ways in our region. There's a Heritage Street in Port Clinton, that's the only one I found.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes.
Currently, is it designated a street, or is it an alley?
It's an alley.
Dedicated alley.
It's a, it is a, it is a public right-of-way, it's a dedicated alley.
Okay, all right.
And from looking at the, at the aerial photograph with the parcel lines on it, there seems to be one parcel that is accessible only from that alley?
There's a series of parcels that are currently, appear to be using like a north-south connection, and Mr. Bowie said that there's a number of easements. So there's properties that are accessing their, the rear of their parcels through the alley. There is one parcel, as Mr. Miller mentioned, that is only accessible from the alley. That's owned by the same owner that is touching, that fronts Hancock Street there alongside of the alley on the northwest.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I drove down that alley today, and there is one that accesses Washington Street. There's only one way to get there. I thought it was, if you turned up in there, you'd have access to the other houses on Washington Street, but it only accesses that one house on Washington Street. Most of that alley, as far as the heading toward Washington Street, they're occupied by the houses that are on Hancock Street and the, what's the other street that goes?
Franklin.
Franklin Street.
Correct.
They've got big lots, and so there's not, there's a couple garages that look like they need to be torn down on there. But other than that, there's only one house that actually accesses Washington Street.
I'd like to recognize...
Yeah, I'm the applicant, Dave Bowie, 320 East Washington Street. Not accurate, okay? There's three houses that use that spur. Myself, 320 East Washington, 316 East Washington, and 310 East Washington.
Sir, when you say spur, you mean the...
The north...
Right, behind your house?
Yes, the north-south spur off of that public alley, okay? There are, there are three, three, three off of Washington that use that spur. That's not what we're talking about, naming.
Yeah, I know, I know that's what we're talking about, but...
Right, right. So there's, so there's three properties. 310, 310 East Washington actually has a three-car garage back there that they utilize, okay? Three, my neighbor, 316 East Washington, and myself, we, neither of us have a garage, actually.
Is your, is your backyard fenced in?
Yes, right. So I own, so I own the property before you get, before you get to the fence.
That would be real...
And also, that garage, one of the garages that you're talking about, that garage is actually owned by 317 Franklin Street.
I wonder if we could ask the gentleman to maybe use the mouse and show what he's talking about?
I don't think we, I don't think, do we have enough?
If you look at the, look at the laptop, and you could use the mouse to move around on the screen.
It's right here, sir.
Oh, the trackpad, excuse me. There you go.
Right, so let's back up to the, where your property is, and you said there were three properties using that alley. Could you point to those?
So this is, this is kind of tough to tell here, but I believe...
I could point it out.
That's, that's our spur right there, right?
Correct.
So you come down, so you come off the alley, you come down this spur by way of easement from both 317 Franklin and, and 322 Hancock. So that's a...
So you're saying there's an eas...
So that's a 16-foot wide spur.
You're saying there's an easement there?
There's an easement there, yeah.
Thank you.
And, all right, so then you come down, and this is my property here, has that skinny eight-feet by 30-feet some odd. So I own this, I actually own this eight by 30-feet that's in front of this garage right here, okay? This garage is owned by 317 Franklin Street. There are three... Street. There are three garage doors along the, that is the west side of that garage. So, the person that uses this garage, they come down that spur, and they enter it here, and that's why all of this area right here that I'm encircling, including mine, is all subject to a driveway easement, so that everybody can get where they're going, okay? So, this is my, not very good at this. So, there's my property right there, 320 East Washington. This is 316 East Washington, and they park in this area back here as well. And this is 310 East Washington. They come in, they own all of this, which is subject to driveway easement. Their garage is right here. It's a three-car garage that they use.
What address is that?
310 East Washington. Chad Whaley owns that property. So, we've got, you know, so this is, we got a lot going on here, okay? We have, you know, we have three, two three-car garages, and then parking. I have enough, even with my fence where it is, if I needed to create more parking, which my, I might have a need for in the future, I could obviously move my fence. My fence is just, happens to be where it is on my property.
What's that structure to the south of the paved area at 310? Between the alley and this shared area?
That's another three-car garage.
And-
That's a three-car garage.
Those doors exit where?
They, they exit onto the public alley itself.
Thank you.
Yes, yep. Yep, that's a three-car garage off of 322 Hancock Street. And so, and then you have a bunch of garages that are on the south side of that alley, off of Adams, and most of those are direct, and that's actually used quite extensively. Most of those people use those garages. There's one or two that are not used on a regular basis.
Seems like we should make a motion.
Yeah, I appreciate your proposition. Since you're up here, I'm curious, what spurred this?
So, it's, so, so two things. Number one, it's, it's difficult, like when I have guests that want, you know, and I need to direct them to park back there, it's difficult to find. So, with signage, that would help that. And then I was spurred by, down here, there's a, there's a city property that was just created, where the city bought a couple of extra lots, and they're building five homes down there, east of Franklin Street, between Market Street and Washington. And theirs isn't even a public alley, it's a private drive, and it has a name. So, I was like, why not us?
Yeah, Pioneer Way comes off of, right across from the drive-through on Franklin.
All right. Entertain a motion?
I entertain a motion that we grant this request.
We have a motion for Mr. Jackson. Do I have a second?
Second. Is there any reason, I mean, can this body even inflict that, or is this a recommendation to what, the City Commission to take the legislation, or?
No, you would be approving it.
This is just a recommendation to staff to do it, because you, I'm not sure-
No, you're, you're naming the street.
Yeah, you're, you would be naming the street Heritage Way, and then staff would place the signage.
That's the process of naming a-
This is, this would be the final decision on it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever named a street before, an alley. Second?
I was going to say, maybe we should call it Jade Way.
So, before we-
Just going to put that in the hat.
Fine, here.
Jade's Way.
So, I just, one more question for the applicant.
Sure.
I'm totally against, I would never, I would fight tooth and nail against wholesale vacation of alleys, but when there's, when there are that many people interested in the neighborhood, in the state of the alley, every once in a while, in rare cases, I think it becomes appropriate to vacate the alley and let them do what they want with it, instead of relying on the city to screw it up, or ignore it, or neglect it. So, just hypothetically, it has nothing to do with this action. Well, so that would make it, it has a little bit tangentially to do, that makes, keeps it in order, I guess. How do you feel about vacating the alley and you guys figuring out what to do with it?
I don't think I'd be in favor of that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it certainly, it certainly does get used beyond just those residents. I mean, there's a lot of activity on Washington, that's going to get increased, and so we do see people that will use that alley to, you know, it's in, I mean, I think Alex's characterization of fair is maybe a little charitable. Certainly, when it rains, fair would be a very difficult proposition, but nonetheless, you know, it does get utilized when there is other activity on Washington Street.
So, the point being, if you created a property owners association that maintained it-
Right.
And it was yours, then you wouldn't have to rely on the city, which is never going to have the resources to make these alleys as nice as they could be.
Sure, understood, but-
This is more a general comment, not, is not necessarily specific to this alley, but-
Gotcha, fair enough.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Are there further points of discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Well, that's worked out. Is that it? I've entertained a motion-
Anything on staff report, we need our staff report.
I do have one, I have one item of new business to bring to your attention. It's not new business, I guess, but a, an update, if that's okay, through the chair?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to reiterate my concern that we put the staff updates on the agenda like we have, as a reminder, like we have discussed in the past, and like we, we've been promised staff updates, and it sounds like that's what we're about to hear. It would be good to simply put that on the agenda as a reminder to, that we, we should expect it, and-
Yeah, I think it's fair point. I wasn't expecting it, I was ready to roll.
Thank you. So, it's been brought to my attention that the American Planning Association offers a group discount for planning commissioners, and so I looked into the price of that and brought that quote to our director and got approval to get all of you membership to the National American Planning Association and the State of Ohio American Planning Association. So, I would like to know if you, I'm planning to use the email we use for your planning commission email and the city hall address. You'll get a magazine, planning magazine, and I can deliver those to you during planning meetings. If you'd like your home address to be used, you get the magazine directly, just see me after the meeting, and I can write it down. And also, I need to know whether you were ever a member of APA in the past. That's one of the questions they're going to ask me when I register you. But I'm able to register everyone, and the city will cover that fee. It's, I think, like $600 total. It's $121 for initiation, and then 68 per member, and $5 per member for Ohio.
Which is a crazy bargain.
Yeah, it's significantly cheaper than my membership, I can tell you that.
Well, thank you, thank you for doing that.
Especially because I'm certified.
I've never been a member, has anyone?
I haven't.
I was assuming you was, okay.
Yeah. I would expect Mr. Pajali would have been, yeah.
And then, I also wanted to let you know, you'll start, you might see this via email, but if you don't, I wanted to make sure to bring to your attention that October 11th, the Cleveland chapter of the American Planning Association is hosting their planning and zoning workshop, and so that's a day-long workshop. They'll have a series of sessions, educational sessions, and a luncheon. So, you, the registration's open for that, if you're able to take the day and go. I find those to be very educational, and it's great networking, it's a great opportunity to ask questions that are pertinent to your role as a planning commissioner, and they have their registration open, they have the sessions that they're going to present are available online on their website. So, if you need help finding that, let me know. I think I've-
Where is that at?
That is in Cleveland downtown. That's all I remember. And lastly, oh, I was just thinking, we're, we just received city commission approval to launch a planning design process for our skate park, and so we are, we've contracted with OHM Advisors. They're landscape architects, engineers, and planners. They do a lot of recreation planning, and they are teaming with Spone Ranch, which is a nationally-known Colorado-based skate park design, like action sports park design professionals. They're 30 years in this business, and they design some really cool stuff. So, that'll be a four-month process, and there's three community meetings in the midst of that. I've really enjoyed getting to know some of our skate park users. They are passionate, a lot of them are there daily. Some of them have gone into careers in design because of their passion for it, and so it'll be exciting to work with them. And that's kind of a, we're, planning and recreation are kind of co-leading that project, so there's an update on that.
That is projected to stay at the current location?
It is, yes, projected to stay at the current location.
Right.
To answer your question, where the conference, or on the 11th is, it's actually at Cleveland State University's Urban Affairs School, right on East 17th in downtown Cleveland.
And over the years, they've done some fantastic.
It's also a very nice building, really good graduates. Yeah.
Also be looking for your invitation to the Boards and Commissions' annual cruise, which is going to be the last Thursday of October. Thanks, Kathy, yes.
So, we'll be taking a cruise on the Good Time to recognize your time volunteering. It should be fun.
And I'm sure the city commissioners, our city commissioners are looking forward to that cruise, too.
Yeah, all members of all city boards and commissions are invited to join us for the, for that Good Time Boat Tour, as a thank you for spending the time and your volunteer and your expertise on these boards and commissions.
Last Thursday would be the 27th?
Last Thursday of October.
27th of October?
Last Thursday of October, yes. And it will be from 5:30 to 7:30, I believe. Maybe 5:00 to 7:30. Your invitations will be sent out. PA email. Oh, yes.
Well, thank you. Are there other staff updates?
That's all I got.
Do I assume everybody's interested in getting their planning magazine and membership? And I'll give you my home address, I'd like to see that.
I'm very excited about the planning. Someone motioned?
Any other, any other business?
Just to-
Have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second? I understand from my reading of Robert's rules, you don't even have to vote.
Nope.
You are adjourned.
It was the esteemed Gary Leckfeld said that.
You can get away with declaring us adjourned, and if nobody complains, then you're good.
We are adjourned.
So, I guess our last meeting over there.
See, there's a-
Giving somebody a moment to check.